This time I will call the March 26, 2013 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I'd like everybody to please stand for our invocation given by Reverend Ray Mullins of St. Paul United Methodist Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Reverend Mullins?
Good morning. I'd just like to invite everyone to the community-wide Good Variety Service at 12:00. It's St. Paul, sponsored by the With County Ministerial Association, and thank you for the opportunity of coming. This is Holy Week, and I know that it's a special time for all of us, and we remember the sacrifice our Lord Jesus Christ made, so let's bow our heads. Most gracious heavenly Father, we enter into this holy of all times. We ask your blessing upon us as we gather here. We pray, Lord, for the guidance and wisdom for this group who oversee this county, that their deliberations and their conversations would not only be for the benefit of the citizens, but would also be for the benefit of the character and goodwill of the people as we serve and care and love each one. Bless this opportunity to serve in your name, for we do ask it in Christ the King, Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting. Our first order of business would be the citizens' time. Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Linda Myers would like to speak on one subject today. Mrs. Myers, welcome.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'd like you to immediately pass a resolution to bring back sunshine, if you would do that.
I have that power, really, ma'am.
Please. Okay. I was reading the paper on Saturday, and I saw the ad for the bids going out for someone to do a website for the tourism business. And I, of course, remember that we had hired somebody to do PR and websites and so on and so forth last year. And I like to save bucks, and I think duplicity in government is not a good thing, and I would just like to know why, or perhaps you guys could figure out a way of having that person, whoever does websites and PR and all that kind of stuff. Certainly, if it's a 40-hour week and it's four weeks in every month, that's a whole lot of hours that they could also be helping out the tourism people and do their website and any other media stuff that they need. That was in the paper. I don't know if you were aware of it or not, aware of it, but it would help out anyway. Instead of hiring another employee or paying somebody else, we should utilize our money as best possible. Thank you.
All right. I think it's close enough to be in time for the public hearing, five minutes after. We have a public hearing schedule. If I can find it here in my glasses. I apologize to you, my computer's just not doing anything. I'm clicking on it. I think I just died.
I have to tell you, I've never seen one do that.
I guess this means I go home, Jerry. I'll see you later. With County will hold a public hearing on March 26, 2013, at 9:05 and 340 South 6th Street in Withfield, Virginia, in the boardroom of the county administration building to solicit public input on the community development block grants. CDBG proposal to be submitted by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. Two projects being proposed are Slab Town Water Project, which is located near Ivanhoe, Virginia, and the Long Meadows Housing Production Project, which is located at Route 52 south of the Fort Chisel High School. Residents of the project are encouraged to attend. The Slab Town project will be replaced by the existing small diameter lines that will provide adequate flow and flow protection with the new water line size to meet current and future needs of the community. The Long Meadows Housing Production Project will provide a new water line and fire hydrants to the Long Meadows subdivision project. Both projects will be requesting CDBG funds for the construction of the new water lines. There we go. Information about the proposals will be presented for comment along with information on the projected beneficiaries, including the number of low-to-moderate income residents to benefit from the proposed projects and plans to minimize displacement. A draft application and fact sheet will also be available for review. Citizens will be given the opportunity to comment on the With County's past use of CDBG funds. For additional information, contact Shale Dalton County Administrator with County at (276) 223-4500. Comments and grievances can be submitted in writing to With County at 340 South 6th Street, Withfield, Virginia, or by phone (223) 4500. At this time, I will open the public hearing.
I got you.
Thank you. Thank you, town. Anyone like to speak? Andy?
Good morning, Andy Cuckley, and I'm Director of Hope here in Withfield, and thank you for the public hearing, and thank you for considering both projects. Water lines are important infrastructure improvements to the community. I'm speaking more specifically about the Long Meadows, High Meadows subdivision, and just have a couple of comments. I've submitted a ton of material to Mr. Reed. Got the job of processing it and doing his hocus pocus to get it to Richmond by tomorrow evening. Okay. Couple of thoughts. One, well information, well cost information in the, along the Route 52 area. Talking to a well driller just right across the road, and he tells us that the average depth in the area is about 300 to 400 feet, so it's about a $6,500 price for the cost of a well to be installed in our subject area. Well, generally, you folks subscribe, I think, to the "build it and they will come" theory of economic development, economic and community development, as it applies to industrial parks. I would argue that it applies to housing infrastructure as well. The investment you're making in the industrial park would be for naught if future employers are looking at the housing resources and stock in the community. So, the homes that we're interested in providing are for workers, working families, households below 80% of median income, which for a family of four is roughly $35,000 to $40,000, $37,000, which is certainly the starting, you know, it's desirable income salary be paying for what you hope to get in an industrial park. So, since the recession, 2008, the number of building permits, we've been tracking them actually for about 23 years, but since 2008, the number of permits issued for new stick-built homes have averaged about 56 per year in the town and the county, with an average value of $114,000. Prior to 2008, that average of 56 would have been more like $150,000 for town and county homes. The town was building about 30 homes a year, and the county was building well over, I don't have that chart in front of me, but about 150, I believe. That number fell precipitously with the recession, and it's slowly, very slowly climbing back up. The 2012 average value has climbed from $114,000 per house to $132,000 per house, showing some rebuilding strength in the housing inventory. For the same time period, the county issued 309 permits for new manufactured homes, an average of 61 per year, with an average value of $31,500. To a certain degree, it is these customers purchasing manufactured homes to be placed on lots which are also financed with wells and septic's needed that represent the first-time home buyer, who should be our primary target market. Unfortunately, too many of these buyers have lower credit scores and lack the patience to work through improving credit in order to better attain financing and a better quality A note about our Deerfield project out here in West Withfield on Route 11. We're down to the last four lots remaining in the total 31-unit lot subdivision. Among the homes we have built and developed and sold are to county dispatchers, county deputy schoolteachers, manager, retail managers, local stores, two or three retirees. So, I think it's important to note that the kind of investment support you're doing, you're looking at for Long Meadows and other affordable housing developments in the community are housing the folks that you have working for you, and that's an important note. Otherwise, you know, housing affordability gets out of reach for schoolteachers, for public employees, so we're doing everything we can to make a house affordable, make it quality-built for a working family income. I also want to point out that in Deerfield, the last four homes we have done, we have done them to an Energy Star specification, and with that requires a home energy rating score certification to see how energy efficient the home is over a comparable code-built home. A code-built home without any energy specs, extra energy specs added to it, needs to score a hundred on a HERS score. The first two homes we did without, with our contractor, that were done without any energy specifications scored a 94, which meant they're 6% more efficient than a energy, than a code-built home. The last two homes scored 68, and we're waiting today on the results of a home that was tested just last week. We don't know what it scored, but that 68 is an important number. That means it's 32% more efficient than a code-built home. That means it's going to save 32% on energy cost, operating cost, for the family who lives there, and that's, those are dollars in their pocket that will make them able to afford more house, more savings, more investment in the community. So, with Long Meadows, we will be required to do all those homes as Energy Star and Water Scent Certified Homes, which is a green environmental certification for both energy and water sense. So, it's an important way to do the right thing with environment, but also do the right thing for the customer home buyer and help them save on operating cost. We have 27 individuals, families in our pipeline at the moment. These are folks who are ready today and will be ready in 18 months. It's difficult when you're doing this kind of a project that's been dragging out now for, you folks know I've been before you, at least three years, because we did a block grant application in 2010 for the same project. So, our pipeline is sort of a moving target of folks who are interested in that project, folks who might end up at Deerfield, folks who might end up with their own financing and their own house purchase. But we have 27 in the pipeline today. So, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the support on this, and we're ready to go. We acquired the property. It's in our name, so the scoring on the project, we feel like, is a lot stronger than it was three years ago, and we appreciate the commitment to help us with the water line installation. I wish we could be doing sewer, too, but some things are a little more expensive.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else like to speak to the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, both of these projects fits in with the With County Comprehensive Plan of what the small, relatively grand application for Long Meadows, $187,000, is being leveraged with millions of dollars, which will also, once it's obtained, the water line and the housing bill will more than return the initial investment to With County, that value of $2.6 million, plus putting 23 people into a new home. That first home for all of us that can remember that is something special that you've looked forward to get out of apartment and into your own home. So, this is the first endeavor for With County to assist with housing production for first-time home buyers, which is, I think, the right thing to do. We wish we could have done public sewer, but there's a little cost prohibitive for this project. And on the Slab Town project, it is another part of a long-term water improvement. We've got 47 households there, 30 some of which are low to moderate income without fire protection, even though their home is next within yards of a fire department. There's no public water to fight those fires. The value of those homes are over $2.5 million. So, I think it's a logical step for us to apply for these grants. Our leverage funds for both of these are, will be based off existing personnel providing inspection services, so it is a good project, both of them, and I would recommend that the board, once we close the public hearing, adopt all their resolutions and proper paperwork to make this happen.
Anyone else? Seeing no other speakers, I will close the public hearing, and now I'll turn it over to any board member that might want to say something.
Do you?
Okay. The resolutions? There's two resolutions. I think Resolution 2013-3 deals with Slab Town, and Resolution 2013-06 deals with Long Meadows. If we take them in order, as we have them in our packet, the first one would be the With County Resolution 2013-03, which would deal with Slab Town.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we adopt the following resolution. With County Resolution 2013-03 authorizing the preparation and filing of an application for community improvement grant funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the resolution says, whereas the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development is soliciting applications for the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Program to fund local community improvement projects, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors have determined that there is a need for a community facilities, Slab Town Water Systems Improvement Project, and whereas the Board of Supervisors has met the citizen participation requirements of the program by conducting two public hearings that were properly advertised in the newspaper as required by the CDBG program guidelines, and therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors wishes to apply for $5,000, excuse me, $587,500 in CDBG funds for the Slab Town Water System Improvements Project, which will benefit 47 households, 32 of which are low to moderate income, and be it further resolved that $30,875 in local in-kind and cash contribution from With County will be expended for the water reconnections in this project, and the Board of Supervisors authorizes the county administrator to sign and submit all appropriate documents for submittal of the CDBG application. So, I move that we adopt that resolution.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
And aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Dalton, I will sign this and pass it down to you on this first resolution. Our next resolution is number 2013-6 for Long Meadows.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we adopt the following resolution, With County Resolution 2013-06 authorizing the preparation and filing of an application for community improvement grant funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development is soliciting applications for the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Program to fund local community improvement projects, and whereas the Board of Supervisors has met the citizen participation requirements of the program by conducting two public hearings that were properly advertised in the newspaper as required by the CDBG program guidelines, and whereas Helping Overcome Poverty's Existence Incorporated, or Hope Incorporated currently owns the Long Meadows subdivision, has determined that there is a need for affordable homeownership opportunities in With County, has an existing pipeline of clients seeking homeownership assistance, has secured Housing Assistant Council and Federation of Appalachian Housing Enterprises Incorporated Funds, and will be receiving additional financial assistance from the USDA Rule Development, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors have determined that there is a need for the Long Meadows Housing Production Project, and therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors wishes to apply for $187,000 in CDBG funds for the water line construction associated with the housing production of 23 units, 19 of which will create homeownership for low-to-moderate families on existing lots in the Long Meadows subdivision, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors authorizes the county administrator to sign and submit all appropriate documents for submittal of the CDBG application. Mr. Chairman, I again move that we adopt that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion concerning Long Meadows? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
And aye. Thank you. I'll sign the resolution. Mr. Dalton, I assume any other paperwork now will be your responsibility, so...
There is one item in this package, is the engineering proposal.
Give me a pen. This is my stock.
Five for...
Bad morning. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Dalton.
The engineering proposal from Peden Boarts to design the water line.
Peden Boarts?
Yes, sir.
There is a proposal, gentlemen, in our packets for Peden Boarts to design the water line. If someone could find that and make that into a motion real quickly. I saw it here just a few minutes ago.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. There was a fee. Mr. Dalton, you remember what the fee was? Trying to find it. That's how much paper in this thing.
It is $20,250, including inspection.
Okay. I assume we can put that in your motion.
You're right.
Mr. McRoberts?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to allow Peden Boarts to design the water line at a cost of, what was that again?
I ain't found it. I remember. $20,000.
$20,000.
Total cost is $107, you're right.
$186,000.
These are a second. Did I get a second from you?
You have a second.
Okay, you have a second.
I'll second it again.
Okay, I was going to make sure I got it.
Second, you're second.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that included inspection and certification?
Yes.
All right. Since it involves money, again, we'll need a roll call vote. I would ask Mr. Hall's vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you. Mr. Dalton, is there anything else then we need to do?
No, sir.
Okay. We will move to the previous minutes of March 12, 2013. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approved the minutes of the last meeting.
All right. Second, that motion. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any corrections to the minutes as they were presented to you? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And one abstention. I will abstain since I missed that meeting, so the vote will show six, four, one abstention. Paying of invoices. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay the invoices.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion to, and a second to pay the invoices. Anyone have any questions concerning any invoice? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And aye. Seven zero. Unfinished business. Mr. Dalton, any unfinished business?
I do not know of any.
Any board member? Seeing none, we'll move to reports, and I see Mr. Crockett is not here today, so we'll go to the Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Barker. You have a report.
The only thing that I have is I did go back yesterday and contacted Food Country, and he guaranteed me that he was going to go back into the deli and get several items and bring them and run them through his cash register, and he's supposed to get back with me today. And I did send, I went back and read the ordinance, and I did send out letters yesterday to all the campgrounds, so that we can get some of the campers that are on those. And we did collect from the one yesterday, the big one, we got that in motion yesterday. They came this morning. Just pray that the checks don't bounce that they wrote for us, so we have got, and I guess y'all did get your copies of all the food tax yesterday. Okay? Anything?
Are they current at the next...
Ram Sword location.
Well, that was what they came this morning for.
That was in arrears, though, but...
And if the checks don't bounce, they're current.
Good. Good.
Okay. Any other?
He's got an item to share about the campground.
I received an email yesterday from Mr. Dalton just asking me to look into, you know, the possibility of amending the, maybe the mobile home ordinance, you know, to pick up these travel trailers. I was looking through the, I guess, the code, and there's a section in the code that allows you, it sounds like you just did this, send a letter to the campgrounds and ask whether it's a campground or a marina or anything that may be storing personal property for someone else. The code section says the Commissioner of Revenue, or the owner of that lot or the operator of that, whatever it is, has to provide a list to the Commissioner of Revenue upon her request of everything that's in the park or who the tenants are. So, if they've got so many spaces rented as of January 1st, then they're supposed to provide a list of names and addresses of those owners to the Commissioner prior to February 1st of each year, if she makes the request each year. So, I guess my speculation would be, you know, maybe send out the letter sometime in the fall and say, "Get this to me by the end of January," or something like that. If they do not do that upon her request and they don't comply, then they can be guilty of a Class IV misdemeanor, because they're not complying with that request from the Commissioner's office. So, the request to me in the email was, can we amend the mobile home ordinance or something to have the owners provide this information to the Commissioner? I think the Commissioner has the tool to be able to do that, and Fay may already know. I just didn't have a chance to talk to her this morning about this statute.
Yesterday, I read the code, and the code says that we can do that, so, and so we got the letters out yesterday afternoon, so...
Okay, great. And I don't know, and Fay may know this, whether that has to be done every year or you just do it once. Probably ought to do it every year just to remind them...
Every year, because it may change, you know, those owners may change.
Right. But that does apply to not only campgrounds, but if you had a lake with boats being stored or any, it can apply to trailer parks as well. So, if some of the old mobile homes in the trailer park aren't, you're not picking those up with a DMV report.
We do send those out every year. We send out those letters every year.
Information about property as of January 1st. So, I don't think we need to amend the mobile home ordinance to require that, since it's already in the code, that she has that ability to get that information, so...
Any other questions?
So, now, now there's no question that you will be able to track these owners.
If, you know, and then I guess we take them with a warrant if they don't provide that information. Is that correct, or...
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what would happen, is we'd have to do, take the owner or the operator to court to say, "Hey, you're not complying with their request."
But it also says you can do just a blanket assessment, right?
Right. Well, if you got, if you have the information as to who owns it, you know, if he doesn't provide, like, the make and the model and stuff of the camper, again, this is... is my speculation, the Commissioner could potentially send a letter to the owner and say, "What kind of camper did you have here in With County on January 1st? Can you provide that information?" If that owner does not respond, then Fay can assess it.
The only thing is getting the owners of those mobile homes, especially the ones without a state tax.
Right. So, you know, that's a task of trying to get. Now, the campground owner, I would imagine grabbed some information when they rent a space.
I'm sure they did.
You know, to be able to provide a name and an address of whoever's renting that space, and they should provide that to you. And then if it happens to be where, you know, John Doe borrowed his uncle's camper and it's actually his uncle's camper, there could be a confusion there. But if the Commissioner's office sends a letter to that person saying, "Please tell me what kind of camper you have so we can assess it properly," if they don't respond to that, then she can just assess it and send a bill.
I can put a statutory assessment on it at any time.
Would be too much trouble for you to reduce that dissertation to an opinion and give it, give it to her, what you think the code says.
I'd be happy to. It sounds like she understands it, but I'd be happy to do that, yes.
I think she does everything except this tracking method. This is what we talked about yesterday. How do you find out who owns these things? And you've just said this is how you find out.
Yeah, I think it's a trial and error issue of, you know, getting the information from the owner and then trying to pull the information from the owner. And if not, you just assess it and send them a bill. And then that person can worry about paying the tax and then come get it straight at some point. But yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Sheriff, if you're on the agenda, is anything you can note?
All right. We'll go to supervisor members. And the first one being Blacklit.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything.
Okay. Wes Withfield?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything.
Fort Chisel?
I'm good. Don't have anything.
Lednigh?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I got a call about the trash on 94 from a creek bridge on toward Avenue. Some lady lives down there. And also, I heard one of the sheriff's deputies making a talk on the Danny G's program. And I thought, "Well, that's very interesting." So, I called him, and I asked him if he would come to my senior citizens group and give that same talk to these people. And he agreed to come. And some way or another, I don't know, but he got sidetracked. But I got two other good ones that come. You know, and they had a lot of valuable information to these people. They tell them, "Don't put on the computers. You're going off to Walmart," stuff like that, because people are sitting and watching it. Very interesting. And if you, if you would like for them to come to some of your groups, your churches or something, I'm sure that you talk to Sheriff King here and he'll set that up for you. And I thank you again, Sheriff.
Thank you. Speedwell?
I hate to bring it up, but I did have a call. Coy mentioned trash. It reminded me. I had a call about just people having trash, trashy places, need to clean up the county. I explained to them that we tried to pass county ordinance. Sit down over our Joe. But I just, I wanted to let you know that there's still people out there that's concerned about it.
All right. TM at large?
Uh, just a couple of things. Me and Mr. Dalton attended two meetings last week with VDOT. And I'm pleased to hear that VDOT's gonna make some improvements on the I-81, I-77 overlap, such as putting stronger guard rail up, guard rail in the whole overlap where people can't cross, you know, through the mediums and stuff when they do have backups. In the governor's budget, transportation budget, they did approve the North 77 merged into 81 South and North 77 to extend it to two lanes all the way up to the Fort Chisel exit. They're gonna put some signage in, on the interstate, placards in the roads where people can tell, you know, which direction they're traveling. You know, if they're going North 81 or South 77 or vice versa, they'll be able to know. And also, in the steep curve at the Rock Quarry, they're looking at putting LED lights and placards all the way around that curve. And it'll be speed activated, I think, that what they said when they come down the hill, if they're going too fast, that activate the lights, the flashing lights and LED lights all the way around the curve. So, VDOT is looking, and they're looking at more improvements to the, to the Exit 77 and Exit 70, and long-term and short-term improvements. So, I'm glad to see that VDOT is, is looking at the overlap and trying to make some safety improvements.
Okay. Well, the only thing I have is on the 4th of April, the Mount Rogers will be having its annual meeting, and it's gonna be held in Bristol. And everybody, I should have received something from them. Did you not? An invitation, and you're supposed to RSVP it?
For...
The Mount Rogers?
Yeah, I got one of them, but...
You did get one? Okay. They would appreciate if you'd send it back in, letting them know yes or no, whether you can attend.
The meals and everything that'd be ordered, it's the annual spring dinners.
Mm-hmm.
It should have been a little postcard.
It was a postcard, right. And it'll be held at the Bristol train station, the old Bristol train station, so... I just wanna make sure that you at least, if you can go back and find it and RSVP it, they would appreciate it. All right, that ends that. The next committee report that we have scheduled here is Budget.
All right, Mr. Chairman, let me get there. Mr. Chairman, the Budget Committee met on March 19th and made the following recommendations: To amend and appropriate $5,000 to Lot Item 7100-45810. And this is, since we do not sponsor the fireworks on the 4th of July at the, at the lake now, we are, you know, helping, you know, sponsor the fireworks here in Withfield for the With County celebration.
Right. And that will be held at the Community College grounds, I think.
Mm-hmm, I think so.
Mr. White told us yesterday. Coming from committee, it does not need a second. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye. Okay.
Uh, number two, to amend and appropriate $30,000 to 43043-45110 for the County Office Building Electrical Service. This is one that, you know, somehow, you know, got under, I guess maybe underbudgeted or whatever. The electrical charges were much more than we anticipated. This will get through the remainder of this fiscal year.
All right. Again, does not require a second. Any member have any, want anything like to say before we vote?
Is that tariff revenue to pay the electric bill, or is it construction?
Electric bill.
Electric bill, yeah.
Okay. All right. Call for the vote. Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye.
Uh, item number three, to amend and appropriate $3,560 to 43043-45230 for the County Office Building Telecommunications.
Not requiring a second. Any board member would like to speak to it before we vote? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall.
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you.
Uh, number, item number four, to authorize the county administrators to sign the contract with Mary Earhart to provide accounting services. And we think, we're hoping that this is, you know, the last time that we'll, we'll need any, any outside contractors.
Okay. So, we switched to the new accounting system.
Yeah, that's the, that's the plan.
Right. Remember... All right, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye.
Uh, item number five, to refer the Retreat With County Fair Association's request of $2,000 to the Tourism Committee for consideration of funding it out of their allocation. This is for a, basically With County, if you will, Fiddler's Convention, to try to get something going in that because we do have a rich musical heritage, and it would be done at the, at the Retreat Fair, which grounds, which has, you know, the facilities to support it. And this would be, you know, prize money that would be indicated for people that would be determined as With County champions. And what this is certainly is just referring this back to the Tourism Committee, and this okays the $2,000 if the Tourism Committee okays it.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I've got in touch with the chairman of the Tourism Committee and provided him with a copy of the request. And to my knowledge, it will be discussed at tomorrow's meeting, tomorrow afternoon's meeting. And they're supposed to get, if we're not able to attend tomorrow, they're supposed to get back with me this week.
Any other discussion concerning this? All right, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 And aye.
And item number six, to amend and appropriate $2,500 to 4203-46009 for retrofitting the county bus to accommodate transportation for litter pickup. And this is so that we can transport inmates, you know, that are on, I guess you would call work release, so that they can be supervised and transported to, to places along With County roads so that they can pick up the litter.
Mm-hmm. Any discussion concerning this? Does not need a second. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. Seven, zero. Thank you. Water Committee?
Well, if I can get there, I'll get you.
Seventy-six. I think all these old computers are saying, "Help."
Uh, the first thing that's on there, I believe, is the one we've already passed, isn't it?
Exactly.
That's what I thought, the engineering agreement with Peden Boards. So, the Water Committee met on March the 19th, 2013, and makes the following recommendation then, because when we look at the number two, and that's to approve change order number one for Lot 24 wastewater improvement phase one.
All right. Coming from the committee, it needs no second for change order number one on Lot 24 wastewater improvement phase one. Is there any discussion?
That actually, the project's finished, that decreases the contract price to $348,315 and adds additional days.
Okay. Any more discussion or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. And that concludes the Water Committee. And we will now go to County Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is Emergency Response Agency Standards. There are several avenues we can handle that. As we move towards our new consolidated dispatch, one of the things that we need to do is implement emergency response standards, a copy of which you have in the board package. We can do this multiple ways. Either adopt it, let the task force talk about it, or as, when we get the new Director of Emergency Communications, they can work with everybody to get this in place and on staff.
Well, Mr. Dalton, we've had some discussion with the task force about making that a committee now and adding another person to that. And I think the right direction would be to go ahead and let the committee look over these standards. And if we make it a committee, I'm gonna ask Mr. Reeves, he would become a part of this. And now you gentlemen will be a committee, not just a task force, representing the board and can make recommendations to the board, which takes three. Mr. Reeves, are you agreeable?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, if that's all right, I think that would be the proper way to address this.
Okay. The next item is a letter from the Governor's Office to ask that we execute the COM-LINK Agreement, or User Agreement Guide, I guess is the proper terminology.
So, we would need a motion to...
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
All right, I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of coming into the agreement in its COM line, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Seven, zero. I assume there was no negatives. All right. National County Government, mine.
April is always a county government day or month, I guess. We have a, some group of things that are suggested that we do. I would ask that permission to get our PIO to be working on some of these issues and...
I agree. Good idea, Mr. Dalton. The With County Animal Shelter?
That is a, the inspection report, the one item of concern, has been corrected, as we discussed yesterday in our budget meeting.
Anyone have any discussion, any further discussion than what we had yesterday? Okay. The Stormwater Management Program. We were gonna send a letter and...
Stormwater Management, this is a letter that VACO had sent to the Governor. I would suggest that the board draft a similar letter and have the Chairman of the Board sign it. As you saw in the budget presentation, the request far exceeds the requirements to implement stormwater management, far exceeds the grant program the state is giving you, so...
Can I have a motion that the Chair write a letter to the Governor?
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Moving second.
And, Mr. Chairman, we did discuss this in the VACO Steering Committee last year and had unanimous support among all committee members that we petitioned the Governor and the legislative body to add more money to this, to assist the counties.
Okay. All right. I'll just, I have a motion and a second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Barron Springs?
You have a certification regarding lobbying in your package, but I would request the permission to sign all the documents necessary to submit the Barron Springs Water Health Department applications. We will be submitting this week a Virginia Department of Health application for the waterworks down there. Also, as part of that, the, I think I forwarded you an email that the Virginia Department of Health attorneys asked us not to make any decisions about receivership until he has a chance to come to speak, hopefully to our Water Committee instead of the full board.
Mm-hmm. Can I just direct you to do that for right now, or do we need a motion?
I think we need a motion, the offer has to signature all those documents for applications for the Barron Springs water.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
If we, if we do this, will we keep those petitioners informed of where we are?
We're meeting with them tonight. We're gonna meet in Barron Springs Fire
We're going to meet in the Baron Springs Fire Department. We may be here, Stephen will be in Baron Springs tonight.
I think somebody had a ham they were taking down there or something, too.
Yeah, Coy brought him a ham. But, I, we're starting the process, but we're not finalizing anything until we get the opinion from the...
For the receivership, what we're doing is that previously, we had talked about making an application from Castleton Road to Baron Springs. We've identified two different funding sources. The Virginia Department of Health has a 0% interest loan, and that's what Stephen is going to be down there tonight. We have to have 51% of the...
So, I was, I'm sorry, I was confused. This is actually about the water line? Doesn't have anything to do with Baron Springs Water Works?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, I understand now.
Anybody else? All right, let's call, vote on the motion. All in favor of giving the county attorney, no, excuse me, the County Administrator priority, sign all documents that need to be signed for this, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
County Attorney?
The only thing I have to report is the notice for appeal on the River Hills will probably be filed today, the latest tomorrow morning. But other than that, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Do we need a break, or can we keep going, gentlemen? Keep rolling, they say, okay. We'll go into new business and we'll see the, start with the consent calendar.
I make a motion, we accept the consent calendar.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, we accept the consent calendar. Any discussion concerning anything in the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And aye, motion passes seven zero. Memorandum of Understanding for Funding and Operation Oversight of Management of the Emergency Communication Center between the town, County of With, Town of Withville and the Town of Royal Retreat. Mr. Dalton, you have any comments on this concern?
The previous agreement we sent to both the towns, they had asked for some revisions, specifically about the Advisory Committee and who had said on that. And the way we've changed it is actually that that group now will develop the budget annual. That gives them some governance. But, I've explained to them that when it's a board of supervisors, the final determination will be the approval of the Board of Supervisors, a budgetary process.
So, they'll just be making a recommendation to the...
They'll be developing the budget and making recommendations of how that center is to be run. And that gives them, I guess, a feeling of control.
Question, what's the balance of that board? Will the county have more than a share of the people on the board? I mean, will it be an equal thirds, or has the county got a heavier...
The sheriff will be on that board. The County Administrator will be on that board. The town managers of each town, the police chief or public safety director for each. So, each, it'll be a third, third, third. The Director of Emergency Communications will serve as, I guess, the secretary of that group and keep the minutes, make the agendas. But it will be a third, third, third.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, then...
All we need, make a motion.
We need to make a motion.
Approved to enter into the agreement.
Into the agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the County Administrator to enter into the agreement with the Town of With and the Town of Royal Retreat.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye, thank you. Motion passes seven zero.
May I say something? I heard Joe a little reluctantly agree.
Good observation.
The, even though that Advisory Board makes those recommendations, the ultimate adoption of everything is still the Board of Supervisors. The Advisory Board is just that, they develop those things just like every other department would develop a budget and recommendations, and then it comes back to the board. And that's, and under those circumstances, I have no problem with being a third, a third, a third. And I think the sheriff will probably play the most knowledgeable instrumental person on our board because I'm going to support what he thinks needs to be in the Emergency Communications Center. And that's, and I think that if there's anybody more frugal with money than me, it's the sheriff.
I don't think he...
I don't know, I'd like to shake that barrel and see who drops out.
I don't think the sheriff's that tight.
Oh, yeah, he is.
I don't know, I can't get any money out of that police activity fund.
Well, it seems to me this is a fair way, and it also gives them input. And they've helped support the Communication Center all along.
And everything is still going to be brought before us, the Board of Supervisors, to be approved.
Right. Bottom line.
Bottom line, it'll still be our decision.
I'd like to clarify that reluctance a little bit, you know, it is fair. But it seems like to me that the county does a lot of heavy lifting and other people are getting equal, and not just on this one. If you look back in history, the county does a heavy lifting on a lot of things. And the participation of the others is nice, and we ought to play nice in the same sandbox. But there's a lot of things go on here that I'd like to see other people participate in a monetary way.
Well, Joe, the only thing I'd like to say to that is, everybody lives in the county. Some of us have dual citizenship, live in a town.
Dual citizenship. Your papers in order.
Yeah, my papers are in order.
Now, this goes back to what I was talking about yesterday. These services that we provide to fringe areas, and they don't help With County out any, we're carrying the full load. And I don't want this to be another one of those things where the county carries all the monetary load and these other political subdivisions, just a token help.
Well, I mean, they're still going to, based on the number, amount of calls that the town uses, towns, they will be paying into the county.
Okay, that's fine.
And I guess the further that, you know, the town is provided at no cost, the towers and the land, here in town, out on the mountain and up here, at no cost to us. We didn't, they owned the property, basically where the towers are at. Our agreement, previous agreement was, they just transferred those to us at no cost, which is a tremendous value savings to the county.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is a resolution in support of Mount Rogers Planning District Commission as a IPR regional sub recipient to a grant for indoor plumbing and rehabilitation program. Is there a motion to enter, I mean, support this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion concerning the...
Okay, now, my understanding is this, you know, the local providers that have always been used will continue to be used. It's just that Mount Rogers is going to be sort of the umbrella.
Does the overseer, I guess that's what I would call.
Yeah.
Are we correct?
That is my understanding of how it was presented.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye, seven zero, thank you. All right, resolution for the Royal Retreat Depot Foundation.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we adopt this resolution so that we can talk about it.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, this is just a resolution of support?
That's what I was going to say.
Okay, no financial obligation? Just kind of a moral, you go get them type thing, right?
My understanding, they need this resolution that we're saying that we think it's a good concept so they can access grants.
Okay, they needed the county's support. Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Since it is a resolution, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And aye. Sports Hall of Fame nominees. Mr. Butch Brewer and the late Mr. Jimmy Goff. We have to accept these, that's correct.
Only thing I wish that you guys that are on that committee would allow, send us the letter before it's announced and put in the paper.
Yeah.
Well, let me explain to you how that committee works. That is a subdivision of another committee, and they don't tell the other committee. It's just whenever, you know, who decides to publicize it.
I'm on the committee, so I'll make sure that happens.
All right.
I'm on the Hall of Fame.
You're on the Hall of Fame? Well, Artie knows what I'm talking about there.
Well, even though Butch Brewer is one of them, I will make the motion to be supportive.
And I will say, if anybody has nominations, you could run those through me. I mean, we'd like to see as much representation throughout the county. It seems like we have less nominate, we have a lot of nominations from George With athletes and Royal Retreat athletes. Fort Chiswell, not as much, so, Coy, Joe, if you guys know of anybody that would be a good candidate, we...
Well, Jimmy Goff actually ended up coaching basketball at Fort Chiswell, I believe, but he was a George With athlete. Gosh, what a day. All right. Do we need to accept this, and I think we do have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move down to other. Is any other new business at this time? Seeing none? We have a closed meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Personnel?
On the closed meeting, I would request if we may, delay that till Wednesday, tomorrow morning, about eight o'clock?
Okay. We can do that. JD, you missed your budget presentation yesterday. I assume that's had a very much emergency or something, but would you like to come and say anything towards your budget? We can go ahead and finish that off.
I can help him, you know, I asked him that question already. He forsake us for the Town of With, who gives him no...
Oh, he did!
I was alone, I had a something on the schedule, and I keep, I had wrote on a note, I stuck it in the calendar, and I actually wrote the town meetings, I wrote those in for the whole year. I went to the town meeting and I thought about it, I thought, I've got a budget hearing this week with the county. Completely missed it. But if you all have any questions about what we submitted, I think we're just going in, of course, through the fuel and then some help with some medical supplies, typical 25,000 that we usually ask for every year. So, and the fuel cards have been great, we've really liked those, they've helped out with the crews. It's made the process a lot easier for us.
We just cut everybody that doesn't show up.
I figured as much, and can we increase our rate by 25%?
County and the town, eh, it's really not a decision.
I have to choose the town, they don't give us anything, so I'm trying to work on it. So, we get, somebody can write a letter to the town supporting the squad.
You might not, you might not tell them that since you were there, you got cut 25%.
So, let me see if I get this straight. You have one organization or government that will give you $25,000. Another organization doesn't give you anything, and you choose to go to their meeting? Okay. No, I think JD, and most everybody did the same, so we appreciate you very much.
JD, has the town budget come out, did they give you anything this upcoming year?
I'm not certain yet, well, we've actually put in a grant to update our radio system. And what we're asking them for this year is our 20% of that 80-20 grant to upgrade our radio systems and training, some training things. And in the past, they gave us $10,000. Last year, they cut it out completely for obvious reasons, and we're hoping that, you know, this will be around $10,000. We can get that back and get that relationship back with them. So, and of course, everybody that lives in our coverage area got our letter, so I'm still waiting on donations from everybody. Thank you all.
Must have cut loss.
It's a diet, he's doing good. Yeah.
We'll compile notes here a little bit later. All right. Mr. Dalton, is there anything we can do budget-wise, are we going to recess, or...
That's what I was going to say, do we have to do anything about that?
Are you two hours ahead?
Oh, yeah. Looks like I am.
I guess mine's hit.
I tried to give you all...
Actually, we have some other.
We have some others?
We do.
Okay.
It was on your desk as well.
Well, who knows?
You have it on your desk there. The BBU request, I think I'd spoken to you maybe a month or so ago about us being underserved, and they're asking for a letter of support.
For what net, BBU?
Bristol, Virginia Utilities. Currently, they're, they're limited in their service area. What they can do is, my understanding, if the county supports it, they can actually build out and offer a variety, the same services, cable TV to areas like Speedball, bundled packages, telephone, et cetera, throughout the county.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we write a letter, support any industry or network coming in can create competition and lower prices, I'm all for.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it, yeah.
Yeah, I think we got a couple of seconds there.
Thank you.
Mr. Howden's the first one I heard. Any discussion? All right. Call for a roll call vote to accept this letter of support. Mr. Hall, I'll start with you.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
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 And aye, seven zero. What's next, under other?
This is part of that, isn't it? Is this part of their presentation?
I think it is. All right. According to the calendar, our next refuse collection is to be here at 1:00 to 1:30. Since there, I see no other business, I assume we can recess until...
Till that time?
One o'clock.
Can we just take a short recess and see if we can get some people here?
Well, if that would help you, I have no problem with that.
Well, I mean, some of us live a little more than five or 10 minutes away from here, you know?
I understand. All right, I'll tell you what, let's do, let's take a 10-minute recess. If it can be done, we'll work on it, okay?
All right.
Fair enough, 10 minutes.